Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to our Bountiful City Council meeting. Seven o'clock and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Beverly Ward.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are grateful to Erin Arbuckle for offering our opening prayer.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful we could gather at this city council meeting this evening. We're so thankful for all of those that put so much time and effort into helping oversee the affairs of our city and those that are so passionate about how we build our community. We're so thankful that we live in this free country and we have all the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray that thy Spirit might be with us this evening. Help us to build camaraderie, to build community, and to work together to make Bountiful a better place. We ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much for that prayer. We will now open our public comment period. And there is a public hearing later. No problem. There's a public hearing later for the amended budget, the budget issues, and for compensation increases for employees and to approve. And so those are public hearings that we will have later. But if you would like to speak to other, any other things regarding anything in the city that you'd like to let us know about, now is your chance. So you have two minutes. If you'd like to come forward, just state your name and where you live.
Gary Davis, 2814 South, 500 West here in Bountiful. It's getting hot. It's getting dry. People are going to get stupid. Well, not get. Fireworks are on sale. I wish to make a thank you right now to all of our wonderful firefighters and firefighting personnel and that for the great job that they're going to be forced to do in the next couple of weeks. They do a great job and I really do appreciate them. And everybody else in the city, please be careful.
Anybody else here to make a comment?
I'm Angela Sterner. And I have some questions. Are questions okay?
So this is-
Or just bring up the issue?
Yeah, it's a public comment period for you to say anything you'd like the council to hear, but we have to give a public notice if we're discussing things. So we can't really discuss something that's not been noticed.
Makes sense. So the landfill and sanitation, I just saw that item in the budget. Can money, more money be made from metal recycling? So I would just like to bring that to everyone's attention to think about. And then a few years ago, the storm drain in front of my house, they were, it was like a big truck and they were, as the man described it to me who was running the machine, said that it's auguring out and that the storm drain, like the concrete had like mineralized and it was like concrete inside the storm drain. And I'm not sure if, he just said, we're just going to keep going until, you know, our contract or time or money or whatever runs out, but that it's probably not going to work. So I'm just kind of, as I watch, I haven't seen the storm drains blowing up when it rains like they had before that, but I don't know, maybe we're just not getting as much water. So I'm kind of curious what the future holds for my storm drains. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone on staff that could talk to? Okay, so we'll ask somebody from the staff to visit with you about that issue. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else for our public comment period, we will now consider approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held June 10th, 2025.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion that we approve the minutes, the previous meeting held on June 10th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We'll now move to council reports and tonight we'll start with you, Councilwoman Child.
With my, my position on the Bountiful Community Service Council, that's a wonderful opportunity to have, where we meet together with a lot of leaders from different service organizations and they are, they're doing wonderful things in the city. Notably, the concert series has come, has started and that will be every Friday night in Bountiful Park, Bountiful City Park. We hope to get a good, good crowds there. The farmer's market has started up and that, that was well attended last week. That was fun to see. So just express my gratitude again for everyone who just volunteers and just serves to make the community better.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor and I had an opportunity just before the start of our work session to visit with the Bountiful Davis Arts Center and present them with a certificate. The standard examiner named them the best gallery, art gallery in Davis County. Those of you that know Serena Ergot, our new executive director over there, know that she's been really working to bring additional vibrancy and revitalize the BDAC. And so we're excited that her hard work is already starting to pay dividends with that award. So that was fun to drop off.
Thank you. Councilman Higginson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Murray.
Just a couple of things. I serve on the mosquito abatement board and I don't think we take advantage of some of the opportunities we have as taxpayers to leverage the neighborhood spray that they offer. And had an opportunity to do that this last week for a party we had in my backyard and there's no charge and we went for several days without mosquitoes in the area, which is nice. Also want to give a small shout out to Ty Cottle. He's the son of Ashley and Andrew Cottle. He just qualified for the U.S. Junior Amateur Golf Tournament next month in Dallas. And the last time we had something like that was Scott Hills in 1995, who ended up winning that tournament. So we wish him the best as he represents Bountiful playing in the, in a big tournament like that.
Wow, that's great. Thank you. Councilwoman Price-Hewish.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I would just like to report on the Power Commission and I see that our power director, Ellen Johnson, is here. Today we had a Power Commission meeting and it's just very interesting to see the utilization of electrical power in our community over the course of the last week, which was part of many presentations that were given today at Power Commission. Because as you're all aware, in the last week, we've had 102 temperatures and then we've had a high of 64 within a two-day range. And that type of crazy weather pattern is something that the Power Department has to be prepared for with resources, all kinds of variability and the resource planning has to be in place. And it is, and the team there is just incredible and the power commissioners who serve are wonderful. So I know that a number of things are going to be discussed later in this meeting, but I just wanted to thank the Power Department for their long-term planning and short-term planning that they do to make sure that all of our lights go on and our air conditioning can go on when it's 102 degrees. So I also wanted to say BCYC, as we are getting ready to, that's the Bountiful City Youth Council, as we're getting to wrap up the month of June, they have been busy. They've been busy planning for their coming year and also participated and put in many volunteer man-hours at the Rotary Car Show, Coats for Kids, and then also for the Chalk Art Festival. And they will be participating in Handcart Days later in July. And I also just want to report to my fellow council members about the Healthy Utah Community designation that we had discussed a couple of weeks ago, but we actually have discussed it many, many times before that. The Bountiful City Health Coalition, which is an integral part of moving that initiative forward, has, the foundations for that have been set. Invitations to a number of community leaders in the healthcare, food security, BCYC, outdoors community, and mental health spaces have been invited to participate. And we have a number of people who have already accepted the invitation to serve in our community in this capacity. So I just wanted to report to you all that we are moving forward with the Healthy Utah Community Designation steps. And I just also want to say thank you to our Trails Committee, not even as a, well, as a city council member, but as a resident of Bountiful. It, just being on the trails this week was really a lifter and is, they're remarkable. And we have such an asset and the planning and of many people in the city and on the council's part as well and the taxpayers, everyone is involved in some way or another with maintaining and planning for our trails system. And they really are a little jewel in the crown of Bountiful. So if you have not been up on the trails, go even take a short little hike. It will, it will just really elevate. Or even just drive up and sit in the parking lot, if that's what you can do today. Anyway, thank you to everyone involved that, with that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. For my report today, I was excited to be able to go on the Weber Basin Water Conservancy District tour today and got to see our own Echo Hydro substation. So it was a wonderful tour and really educational and beautiful. It was nice to be out and to see some of the, some of our facilities. Also, just wanted to report that last week, all the mayors in Davis County were invited to COG, Council of Governments, to our Bountiful Ridge Golf Course. And so it was really fun to be able to invite everyone to Bountiful and for them to be able to see our golf course and, and our city. And so it was nice to have them here. Also, just wanted to report that we won a few awards. As Councilwoman Bradshaw said, the best gallery for Bountiful Davis Arts Center, also best historic district for our main street, went to Davis County, went to Bountiful City. And the best of Davis County, best farmer's market also came to Bountiful City. And so I'm hopeful that the council is willing to get a picture afterward with these awards to appreciate these being recognized by the Davis Chamber of Commerce and for best of Davis County. So it was exciting to win those awards. We will now move to item number five to consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid on June 11th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures greater than $1,000 paid on June 11th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will now move to consider the appointment of Erin Arbuckle to our Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission recently has, has a vacancy following the expiration of Jim Clark's term, the end of this month. Jim Clark served on the commission for two consecutive terms and we really appreciate his service. Erin Arbuckle was one of many applicants and he's been a longtime Bountiful resident. He's a licensed architect with over 20 years of experience in design and planning of community institutional and mixed-use projects. He holds professional certificates and is an accredited member of the Congress for the New Urbanism. Mr. Arbuckle's resume includes significant involvement in both public and private sector projects throughout the state and the western U.S., including libraries, cities hall, city halls, and large-scale mixed-use developments. He's served on the Administrative Committee for the Planning Commission for the past year and demonstrates a familiarity with the city's planning principles and ordinances. And he has applied once before for Planning Commission and, but this time, we, we just were really impressed and excited to offer this position to you. And so we're so grateful that, if you don't mind just standing up, this is Erin Arbuckle here and who we're, who we're hoping is, the council is willing to appoint for this term on the Planning Commission. We're grateful that you're, that you've applied and we would just like to ask the council to appoint him to this position. Any questions from the council?
Mayor, if there are no questions, I would be happy to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Erin Arbuckle and we welcome him to the team and tell him he's going to have an exciting summer with some great issues that are going to come up.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded by Councilman Higginson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to the team. Thanks so much for being willing to serve on our Planning Commission. And for those of you here for these appointments or for any specific item, we're grateful to have you stay, but we understand if you do need to leave. So thank you so much for being here tonight. For our next item, I am so excited to tell you about Jill Frazier and her, her appointment, her proposed appointment to the Administrative Committee. So it's a three-member body authorized to review and act on certain land use decisions as provided in the Bountiful Land Use Code, including home occupational, conditional use permits, detached accessory dwelling unit permits, short-term rental permits, et cetera. The committee is made up of the Planning Director or designee, the City Engineer or designee, and a resident member. The resident member is appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council and serves for a period of two years. So Jill Frazier, she's a longtime Bountiful resident, has expressed her willingness to serve on the Administrative Committee. Ms. Frazier has extensive experience in community service, civic involvement, having served in numerous volunteer capacities, including PTA president, local school community council member, Handcart Days Committee Chair, and a crisis responder for Safe Harbor Women's Shelter. She's also worked professionally as a compliance officer in the real estate investment industry and is familiar with zoning, land use regulation, and development review processes. So she brings a collaborative, balanced perspective and has demonstrated a commitment to community values. Her civic engagement and understanding of neighborhood-level planning issues make her well-qualified to serve on the Administrative Committee. Jill is here. Would you mind standing, Jill Frazier? Thank you so much for being here. So I would love to, to ask the council to approve her appointment on the Administrative Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, but first I also, I want to thank Jill and her husband, Sean. They are in their third year of planning and carrying out the Bountiful Handcart Days Parade. It's a lot of work. Thank you. All right, make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Jill Frazier as a resident member of Bountiful City Administrative Committee, serving a two-year, two-year term, ending on July 1st, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much for being willing to serve on our Administrative Committee. Okay, we will now move to item number eight to consider approval of the purchase of network replacement equipment. And we'll ask, is it Corwin who's going to take that for us? Great, thanks for being here tonight, Corwin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Bountiful City has been operating for the last nine years on network switches and wireless access points from Ruckus Network, formerly Brocade. Currently, over half of our existing network switches are past end-of-life and end-of-support. We researched competing technologies from Arista, Ruckus, and Fortinet for replacement network hardware. The Information Technology Department recommends that the city council approve the purchase of network replacement equipment from Netwise for $109,964. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the network replacement equipment from Netwise. And thank you for looking into many different options and selecting what is best for Bountiful City for $109,964.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. And now we'll invite Ms. Amber Corbridge to come up for our next item, item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This item is a final architectural site plan review for vehicle services at 416 West, 500 South, Suite C. This property is zone general commercial and is listed as a conditional use in our zone, or in that zone. And so at this time, they need site plan approval. The commission did approve their conditional use permit at the last meeting. There's no proposed changes to the building or site. Because it's a change of use, it does have to come before you as a site plan review. The commission reviewed this application on June 17th, 2025, and forwarded a positive recommendation with the conditions listed in the report, which are that they need UDOT approval because it does front on a UDOT right-of-way. And with that, we recommend that the council approve with the condition that the applicant receive UDOT approval. Any questions?
Do you know where it is in the process of getting UDOT approval?
So I just spoke with the applicant. They are on the schedule but won't be heard for another two months, I believe. And so we can have them get a temporary business license in the meantime, because that is a long time for them to have to wait for UDOT approval. So that's something that our staff internally can work with applicant on.
Any questions from council?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve with the condition of the UDOT approval and hope that we can help them with that temporary permit. It is a long time to wait and it's great to see that that site be occupied by a business ready to serve residents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And the item number 10 is yours as well.
This is also a site plan review. It's a change of use, similar to the last item where the proposed use is personal services. This site does not have a personal service use or, so they will need to go through this approval as well. It's a permitted use in the heavy commercial zone, which is where this is located. The commission reviewed this application on June 17th, 2025, and forwarded a positive recommendation with the condition that they receive UDOT approval as well, as it does front on a UDOT right-of-way. So we recommend that the council approve with that condition that they receive UDOT approval. Any questions?
Where is this one in the, in the?
I don't know, but I can reach out to the applicant and let them know if they're needing that license, they can obtain a temporary one, so.
Did you have a question?
I was going to-
Same question, okay. What are the questions do we have?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final architectural and site plan application at the stated location for personal services, subject to UDOT approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much for your help tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, and now we will turn the time over. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more.
The next one too, okay.
Yes. This is also a final architectural and site plan approval for a hotel, proposed at 638 North, 500 West. The site is currently vacant and located behind Culver's. This proposed hotel would include 87 rooms, seven employees, 80 parking stalls on-site, plus shared parking and cross-access between the adjacent sites with Culver's and Seven Brew, which face 500 West. There is an attached parking study for details. These plans have been reviewed by the Planning Commission on June 17th, 2025. They forwarded a positive recommendations with conditions which are that the applicant put in any utility easements for water lines if necessary, as well as meet all staff review comments. There was a discussion about the setbacks, as they do not currently meet the ordinance, but there is a, an ordinance or code that states that setbacks may be reduced during site plan approval process if the land use authority determines that there is no need for a landscape buffer along the portion of the site and that the public interest is better served by reducing the setback. And no setback may be less than required by international building code. So in that discussion, they talked about how the adjacent uses wouldn't be negatively impacted by reducing the setback less than the 20 feet that would be required. So we found that it was sufficient to meet building code and doesn't negatively impact their surroundings. Any questions about this item?
I don't have any questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, did-
I was just going to say, I think this is an exciting development.
Yeah.
We, we have never-
We have never had a hotel.
We've never had a hotel. It's been across in our adjacent jurisdictions and we often get entities saying, you know, if you do XYZ event, it'll be so great because you'll get a lot of visitors and, and you'll pick up the transient room tax and things like that. And we, we don't. And, you know, now we will. So I think it's an exciting development.
Yeah. Did you have a question?
No, I did, but I don't anymore.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else with any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve, Mayor, with the requirements in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Price-Hewish. And we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll turn the time over to Tyson. Tyson, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Really appreciate your time tonight. Tonight, we are presenting the annual risk assessment that the city performs. The council will remember that this is a requirement from the State Auditor's Office to come before you and present the assessment that we perform as management on the city's inter, the city's internal controls and how we, how we measure up to the standard that the, the State Auditor's Office has outlined in a fraud risk assessment checklist. So we've, we've presented on this for a number of years, so I'm happy to go into further detail, but kind of the high level is, the, the State Auditor's Office has specific checklist items. And as long as you can say that you, you fill out that checkbox, you can, you can earn those points for the, the metrics. The, the metrics has five different categories of what they deem as high, very high fraud risk, high fraud risk, moderate, low, and very low fraud risk. So the city has long had a practice of monitoring and assessing internal risks. It's something that as management, we feel is very important to, to ensure that we are being true, safe, we truly safeguard the, the city's assets. So this has been a longstanding practice of the city from management, from, from staff all the way up to, to top management. So we're, we, we've always felt that this is an important practice. The State Auditor's Office recently, within the past five years, has come out with this model and, and point metrics. And so tonight, the, what we're presenting is a similar report to what we reported last year, that we would be in a low fraud risk category. And again, the very lowest is that very low category. So we're presenting a low category here. And the, the main difference from last year is that we wanted to- is that we wanted to come back to the council, as we talked about last year, and discuss the potential of having a ethics policy that each of the city employees and elected officials would adhere to and sign on an annual basis. As we've discussed in the past, we felt that just simply having a quick written statement that everybody signs may not achieve the true intent or spirit of the, of this, this internal control. So, our hope is that we, we create an ethics policy, an ethics code of conduct, if you will, and that each year we, we spend some time training both city employees, elected officials, on, on what's in the, the city's ethics policy. So, tonight, we have before you a draft of that policy, and, and with this, we would, we would propose that not only do we just adopt a policy, but we train on this policy, and we, we try and, and truly send out the message that Bountiful cares about ethics, and we really want our employees to not just sign a document that says, yes, I'll be ethical in my behavior, but to truly study it, learn what it means to be ethical, and to, to act in the best interest of the city and its residents. So, that's, that's the intent behind this policy, not just to get 20 extra points on, on the checklist, but to, to make it something substantial, something that, that truly can affect change, rather than just, yes, I checked that box and I get 20 points for it. So, so that's, that's the draft before you. Would love specific feedback on the policy, if you have any. We have brought this before the management team, and there were no changes to the policy at that point. Obviously, there's still much more to come with this. How we implement it, how we do trainings on it, all of that is still yet to come, but wanted to bring it before you tonight to, to, to begin this process, and then hopefully next year when I present on this, we are then earning that extra 20 points because we've implemented, we've trained, we've, we've done the steps to, to say it's not just a, a quick checkbox that we've done. So, that's the report tonight. There's, there's no specific action from the council that, that is needed. This is just a, a public report that is a requirement from the state auditor's office, but happy to answer any questions or discuss it in further detail.
Thank you. I really liked your draft, and I know that this is something that we have been talking about for years, and so it's great that we have a starting place here. And I love, I love what you said about not doing it just for the sake of checking the box, but having it mean something. And I would, I would just add to that, I think that's wonderful, that we want it to mean something, but at the same time, is there, is there a way that we can administer this so that it's not cumbersome for staff? Like, I don't know if there's an easy way, like to combine it with open enrollment, or, you know, a Google form where people can go through, or, you know, I mean, I, I get what you're saying about making it so it's more than just checking a box, but, but is there, is there a way that you've thought of how you'd want to administer it, or, you know, carry it out? Do you, do you know the method yet?
Yeah, great question. We've not nailed down the method yet. Some of the ideas that we've thrown out is possibly during the, the annual employee training day, so spending some time doing a little bit of training on it, and then have the employees sign after that training. A possibility of open enrollment, a possibility of, of just doing a mass email. So, there are various options. We've not really narrowed it down to which one would be the most effective, so I, I can't per se how we're, we're planning on, on carrying it out, but we, we've thrown out some ideas at this point.
But I love this as a start. It's great. Any other thoughts from the council?
Mayor, if I may, I just really want to congratulate you and your department on bringing this to us, because it was a specific request that we add the ethics policy. I really love what it states, and the, I've not heard this referenced, or seen this referenced in this way, the fraud triangle, and I think this is, I think this is really important, and I think we've even seen in recent news coverage of some not-so-distant municipalities that have had issues relating to ethics. So, I think it's something we have to ever be vigilant about. So, I really appreciate this. I did have a question, though, about the, it says, this will be a document that is signed by all regular employees and officers of the city, so I'm just wondering, is this something that we would anticipate the members of our committees and commissions would also, we would also ask those individuals to sign this as well?
Yeah, it's a great question. As far as the, the 20 points go, it's, the exact wording is, "Our employees and elected officials required." So, that could be interpreted either way, I, I believe. There, there could be a case made for either interpretation there. So, I, I guess that could be something we, we could discuss and say, what do we feel is the best approach?
But technically, it says employees and elected officials.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would hope that we would extend it to people who do volunteer in an official capacity to, and I realize this is something that we would discuss later, but we do rely in Bountiful on a lot of individuals in our community, as we've seen here tonight with the appointment of Jill Fraser and Erin Arbuckle. We have Power Commissioner here, Dan Bell, and Beverly Ward on the commission, and Power Planning Commission. And, and we put a lot of trust in these individuals to also act in a ethical way and, and bring their best recommendations to the council. So, I would hope that that is something we can have a discussion about, and I, right now, I would view that as a favorable thing.
Thanks. Any other thoughts?
I just have one thought. Mayor, I like the content very much of this policy, and I love the idea of, of training on it. I wondered a little bit about, we're asking them to sign below, "I commit to conduct that," I commit to conduct that reflects integrity and strength in this public trust. I wondered about changing the wording throughout this to "I." I will do this as a, this is a statement of what I am committing to do. As I read it, I felt like I was being trained in the fraud triangle, which was wonderful. But thinking of, that I am signing this ethics policy, I want it, like, I'm committing to do all of these things, or I'm committing not to do these things. Just a thought.
Yeah, that's great feedback.
That's great input. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Tyson. Okay, our Power Department Director, Alan Johnson, this next, next item is to look at the Cash Valley Electric bid.
Yes, Mayor and council, it's great to be here tonight with these two items. The first thing we have is, is an ongoing expenses for our Northwest Substation, for the substation what we're going to be rebuilding this fall into the spring of 2026 over by Viewmont. This would be one of the bigger contracts that we have for the, the substation. This would be the labor and the cement and rebar and stuff to actually install all the other pieces of equipment that we've been buying, and we still have two more pretty good-sized bids and a smaller battery bid that'll be coming for you in the next month. This is the type of equipment where you're working in substations, hooking up relays, testing it. You, you can't just get any contractor, you're gonna get people who typically work in substations. In our area, there's really only the three. We did go to those three, and the one just said it wasn't big enough, and they was too busy, and they're out of Nevada. So, we had the, the other two local contractors who, both of them have worked. We've had good work, good success with both of them. Did have a bid opening, and Cash Valley was the low bid at the $3,199,644. This is over what we had anticipated, but it's, we still need to move forward on the project within that we had some contingency, but this is going to eat it up. But it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we still move forward with awarding it's a low bid to Cash Valley Electric, so.
What questions do you have, council?
I have a question, Mayor. Alan, you just mentioned that this bid being a bid over what you'd anticipated would eat into the contingency for this project, and you also mentioned that we still have two big and one small items that are needed to, to round out all the things that are needed to rebuild that substation. Will we be pulling that from reserve budgets? Will we need to reopen a budget down the road to, to adjust if those other two bids come in also high?
Well, the other two could come in, because the one bid for the smaller ones for batteries, and we have a pretty good idea what that one is. The other one would be steel, and with the tariff situation, steel could be an, an issue, but they are not the, this magnitude. However, to answer your question, as we go into this, we're still have a lot of items that we've been ordering, like transformers and breakers and relays and equipment, and a lot of them are coming out of the country. And we've already been notified by a couple of them that terrorists will be affected, but we have not seen that dollar amount. So, as these items come together and we put it together, we'll probably have to open our budget next year at this time, to take into account what we may end up with, with what tariff impact and this, the fact that we missed this one here. Like I say, we missed it a pretty good decent amount, so.
Well, I know this substation is one of our oldest still in play, and as someone who lives on the northern side of the city, and wants to ensure that we continue to have air conditioning for the summer, I, I know it's an important project to move forward, so I'll just depend on you to help us manage the budgets as we go forward so that we can do our best.
And, and I did not answer yes. It would be being pulled from our savings retained earnings to fund this next year, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid from Cash Valley Electric for a total of $3,199,644 for the Northwest Substation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, and you have our next item as well. Thanks, Alan.
All right, the next one, again, this one was, again, like the other last one, we took it to Power Commission this morning with their recommendation. This would be for our Pineview Hydro Project. We're having some issues both with the computer and the redundancy. The hydroelectric project, it goes through a pipeline, and we have to measure the flow that comes in, and we have got two of these type of ultrasonics, the same brand that we work with. But what we had some trouble this year with, the one is that we're using to backup, which is a different one, failed and threw us into trouble. So, we need to get a second one that is reliable, and this would be the same Acusonic product that we have the other two, so they'll work in conjunction and follow back through it. This is money that we had identified into the budget that would be having the public hearing in, so this would be coming out of next year's budget also. It is within what we had anticipated, unfortunately, this one. So, it would be the Power Commission's staff's recommendation that we award to Acusonic for a flow meter for the price of $82,385.
Any comments or questions?
Happy to make a motion, Mayor, if there's no questions, that we approve the purchase of the Acusonic flow meter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just had a, I just wondered if our Zoom is working tonight. Okay, it's on. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, YouTube, thank you. Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Okay, um, okay, our next item is to consider for adoption the fiscal year 2025 amended budget and fiscal year 2026 final budget with related items. We'll turn the time over to Galen Rasmussen for, you want to do an explanation first before we go to the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight is a continuation of a public hearing that took place last time we met on June 10th, and that public hearing was for the purpose of discussing the transfers from the Power Department to the General Fund, amending the current year and, uh, transfer, and a public hearing on the one in the fiscal year budget for 2026, and then also an overview of the budget for 2026 with a public hearing on all three of those items. The continuation of the public hearing tonight is to discuss the budget, and to also go over a related item which is related to the compensation of municipal officials. So, we'll just go through a brief presentation on that, and then open, have you, Mayor, open some public hearings when that gets to that point, if that's okay? All right. I skipped over one of those because we, we talked extensively about the process that we went through last time, which starts in January and February with council retreat, and with our staff discussing revenues that we project will be there, and then meeting with departments to come up with what their needs are, and then balance the two, the expenses and the revenues. And then we have come to a point last, this last May, where we adopted a tentative budget, and then we will have public hearings that follow that to have the public have an opportunity to comment. And that tentative budget's adopted tonight, we're considering a final adoption of that tentative budget with some adjustments to it. This is what the budget is billed on, this slide just, this displays, excuse me, the council's policy priorities that each of our departments align their expenses with in developing their budget request. And so, that is every year, that is re-looked at by you in a council retreat, and then we align our budgets with that. Here's some of the key points on this budget that's being presented for fiscal year '26, which begins July 1st, 2025, and ends June 30th of 2026. And that is pretty small, but there's a lot on there. It talks about the property tax revenue that we're anticipating, 3.6 million roughly, for general operations, and 473,019 for the debt service that we have on our general obligation bond, for a total of just about $4.1 million. And tonight, we'll adopt, or present for your consideration of adoption the certified tax rate, and the rate that would develop that revenue that is necessary for the debt service. And then there's a listing of the fees that are in the budget request, a variety of individual fees. This budget also includes cost of living adjustment of 5% for all regular full-time employees, and it has a 6.51% increase for health insurance. And then there's also some other adjustments in there. There is a new position, an assistant golf professional at their golf employee, so that's in there. Just to go over briefly where the money comes from, there's a graphic here that shows that. And most of our revenue comes from user fees. You would think it would be taxes, but there is a fair amount that does come from taxes, but it's predominantly user fees. And where that money goes, it goes a lot towards funding the people that deliver the services, as well as our items which we call operations and maintenance, which are maintenance contracts we have, utilities we pay, a variety of things that come into that play, and then our capital expense, which varies year to year because we are predominantly paying as we go, rather than going into debt for the things that we buy that are large in nature. This is that same graphic reduced to a lot of numbers. So, to give you an idea there, the balance of what those monies are coming from and how they're used. This is the expenditures for 2026 broken out by department graphically there. Just give you a second to look at that. And then again, in a tabular format. This is an idea of where our sales tax and gas tax rates are. These are developed by the State of Utah, of course, and then also some things that we have had a hand in, including the recent adoption of the RAP tax to continue that, that tax for the uses that it's there for, transient room tax, which we've had involvement with. And then we receive these funds for the various purposes, including gas tax, which goes to fund our roads and things of that nature. So, that's just a depiction of that. This is a summary of the budget, and the net amount of about 106 million, net of the transfers between funds. That is the summary of the revenues coming in, and the locations are the, the categories of revenue. Just let's take a quick look at that, and for the public as well. And to balance the same numbers, but by where those funds are coming out of And to balance the same numbers, but by where those funds are coming out of and what they are funding, what areas of the city are being funded. Now, just in snapshot view, the Power Department has $43.9 million of that budget, that $106 million budget. The Water Department, 6.9 million. The Streets Department, 7.9 million. The Combined Sanitation Fund, which are three different operations, recycling, landfill, refuse, collection, 5.3. Our Police, which is our largest general fund department, 12.7 million. Fire and EMS Services, which is a share of the South Davis Metro Fire that we are assessed along with the other communities that are served by that agency. Stormwater of 2.5 million, Cemetery of 714,000. And then our Fiber Operations, most of that, $16.2 million is the debt service and the construction costs of the operation, about 180,000 is operations on that. So it is just starting, of course, which is all built out now and it is orderable, so, which is exciting for us to get to this point. And hopefully that many of our residents are taking advantage of that. We are seeing quite a few new signups and all the different tiers of speeds that come with it, so. This is a listing of the, we go in March, we go through a process where non-for-profit entities within the city have an opportunity for applying for a portion of our RAP tax. We give 11% of the allocation of the RAP tax funds that come in for non-for-profit organizations that are cultural, recreational, or zoological in nature. And this is a listing of the entities that applied and what the allocation was given of how much money there was allocated to that. So just to give you an idea there.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Have we, have we notified these organizations of the amount that they're receiving?
No, we have not yet because we needed your adoption of that prior to that.
So after tonight, they'll be notified?
What I have done in the past and I'll continue this year is to have a letter that goes out to let them know that they've received an allocation, what that allocation is for, and then ask them to request that that, those funds be released to them along with if they were funded in the previous year, to give a report of how they utilized the funds that they were given. And then in future, the ones that are new, they would do the same thing in a future year. And so.
Excellent, thank you.
Now, I've got a section of the presentation that's carved out for a discussion of the water rate increase and the power rate increase. And so Craig Christensen will handle this portion, and I will advance the slides as he needs them.
Welcome, Craig. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, of course, anytime. Thanks, Mayor and Council, for having me here this evening to discuss the water rate increase. So went over this same presentation a couple of weeks ago, but we'll just go through it again for those just tuning in. Let's kind of take a look at the Water Department at a glance, kind of the whole overall picture. We've got 11,139 connections, that's service meters to residential and commercial buildings, homes. We have 260 pressure-reducing valves. A lot of that we talked about last time, but that helps reduce the pressure in our system as it gravity feeds down the system to keep the pressures under control. We have over 180 miles of mainline pipe. That's included distribution and transmission lines. 15 reservoirs, 14 booster stations, nine wells, one treatment plant. It's up Mueller Park Canyon. The annual revenues that we get are around 6.5 million. We also have a budget line item that we have for our annual pipeline replacements and liners when that situation is relevant. That is what we use for the in-house and contracted jobs. So our crews try to replace a couple of miles of pipe themselves a year, and along with the contractors, we try to get around that 3.5 miles a year. So part of the increase is to help us fund some of these future projects that we have in our capital plan, replacing some reservoirs and some of them that are in need in the near future here. The biggest one, kind of that we have first on the replacement is the Mill Creek Reservoir and the Booster Station. But we've also got Barton Creek Reservoir and the well that is on that site. The well has not been used in a long time, and that's one of those ones that we would like to get working again. Ashdown Reservoir is also one of the older ones in the system that we'll, we're looking at towards the end of our proposed tenure that we have thus far. All right, so just to, to kind of give you a look of what the Mill Creek Reservoir project would consist of, is it's the concrete square that's on the corner picture on the right, the lower right. That's the original hopper bottom reservoir that was built 100 years ago. So the hopper bottom's kind of a V shape. And they put the roof on it in the 60s. And so they put these pylons on there and poured a concrete top on top of it to get that enclosed. So kind of the proposed is that we're going to have, build one reservoir. Then we can take out the old reservoir, so we'd have that in line because this is one of the, the hubs that's in our system that we can get water to the south side of town or to the north side of town or east side of town. It's a, it's a very critical part of our system. But after that reservoir is put online, we'd put on the next reservoir, which is the one that's kind of where the existing reservoir sits now, and then also build a new pump station for that as well. So this is just kind of a look of what we're seeing inside of the Mill Creek Reservoir. It has been repaired multiple times over the last 30 years. And in the top left picture, you can actually see a really good crack in there that's developed and some of the old repairs that have been hired out to have those repaired. Some of the pictures, they're kind of hard to see, I apologize about that, but you can see that the concrete's falling. It's starting to expose all the rebar that's in there, and it's kind of losing some of the structural integrity that's got there. We're also getting some root infiltration from the vegetation that's around it that we've got to get cleaned out also. So this is also Barton Creek, it's the same style. It's a couple, 10 years newer, so it's only 90 years old, but yeah. So it's kind of the same thing, hopper bottom. This is kind of just the, still the, the real high-level planning stages right now, but we're going to have to look at that one after we get done with the Mill Creek Reservoir. Another part of rate increase is the mainline replacements. Mainline replacement jobs are starting to cost more as parts increase. Just to kind of give you a look at what we're looking at here for eight-inch pipe that is the standard to put in the ground now is the same price of what 10-inch pipe was like five years ago. So the cost of pipe's starting to go up, parts are going up, brass fittings are going up. So these are some of the things that we're looking for with the increase. But with the mainline replacements, just so y'all know, what we're looking for is extensive leak history. And if we have multiple leaks on a street that we can need to repair, water qualities, if we're constantly fighting dirty water calls or dead-end lines that we're, we have to flush in the, you know, quarterly, we may, we have to meet the regulatory requirements, lead and copper rule, anything else that the EPA is changing. So a lot of that, like the lead and copper, is that we have to replace all the service lines in the city by 2034. We're in the process of doing that. So instead of just making repairs on service lines, we actually have to remove the whole entire service line now. So it's a lot more involved that way and uses a lot more parts. We also coordinate with other city entities. If they're going to redo a road, we like to get in there and get the mainline replaced at the same time so we can make sure to not have any mainline breaks on a new road or service poles or anything of that nature. So that's kind of the, the look at that there. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Craig?
I just had one question. So is that the order of priority? The Mill Creek project is first, but then Barton Creek is the second in priority? Or was that?
Yeah, that's how we have it in our, our 10-year capital currently, is the Mill Creek Reservoir, the first reservoir, next year, next reservoir and booster station. Give it a little, another year Barton Creek, another year Ashdown, so we can get some of that surplus in there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. On the Mill Creek, the pictures that you showed, the rebar is starting to, to come through. Does that affect the quality of our water in any way? Like rust and things into the, in the water?
No, that doesn't, on that, because it's actually on the, the ceiling pylons that they put in. It's just the moisture that gets up in there from the cold water and then like the hot days that we have, condensation, that's what's causing that. It's not so much down on the hopper bottom side. But in that case, we do have the secondary rule where we have to use the chlorine, and that helps take care of any of those issues.
Thank you. Any other questions?
On the Mill Creek site, if, in this long term, is there enough room that if we wanted to build a third basin, there's enough easement in that to put a third one there?
I believe there is. Lloyd has been working on this to get things planned out. We've done geowork and all that stuff to.
There is plenty of room to do that, but currently our system has plenty of storage. We don't, we don't really lack for storage at this elevation.
If we ever need to in the future, there's a spot there if we needed that water, okay?
That's kind of why we're trying to take out the existing so we can have that little portion there.
Thank you so much. Any last questions? Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Galen, are we? Okay, now we'll hear from the Power Department. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us present our budget and our rate increase. I'm sorry if some of you experienced deja vu. Next slide. So for fiscal year 2026, we're proposing a balanced budget of $43.9 million. That includes a 3% overall rate increase and a 10% increase to our fees, both effective July 1st, 2025. We're also proposing increasing our pole attachment fees from $14 to $15. Next slide. So our department's major roles and critical functions, first and foremost, is to ensure the safety of everyone that interacts with our electrical systems, to buy and generate electricity at economical prices, and to deliver long-term reliable power to our customers. Next slide. We're really proud of our, our safety record. Over the past seven years, we've had no lost time accidents that equates to over 2,555 days. Each year, our team works more than 70,000-plus hours. We've also received awards from the IPSA and the APPA for our safety record. Our electrical system includes six substations, 42 miles of 46 KV transmission lines, 90 miles of 15 KV overhead distribution lines, 135 miles of 15 KV underground distribution lines, and 75 miles of streetlight circuits. Since the pandemic, our costs and delivery time for all the materials that we use has increased substantially. You can kind of see some of the items and their associated lead times. Because of some of these longer lead times, some of the manufacturers aren't honoring the prices that they gave us originally. And some of the prices have gone up, like wire has gone up 60%, while some items we can, we can get, like our rubber goods, terminations, connections, those prices have still gone up quite a bit. Next slide. So our priorities for the upcoming fiscal year is to upgrade feeders 273, 571, 573, and 576. And a minute Luke will show you exactly where those are. Also, to begin a replacement and upgrade of our control systems at our two hydros, to rebuild the Northwest Substation, and to acquire power resources to stabilize the cost of power and increase green and carbon-free resources. I'll turn the time over to Luke for a minute.
Hello, Mayor, Council. As Tyrone mentioned, these are the feeders that we're going to be upgrading. The feeder 571 is shown there in yellow. This is over off 1800 South by Renaissance and by the, I want to call it Willie dealership, but it's a performance dealership. The stuff shown in red for 573 is going down SR 68. Starts at 1800 South and goes all the way down to the corner of Slim Olson's property. Also includes feeder 576, which is shown in blue. These feeders are major backbones. They come out of our substation, the Southwest Substation there. The nice thing about getting these upgraded is they actually back each other up. So if we have an issue on feeder 576, 573 could back it up and vice versa. They're, they're all going into this, what we call is a piece of switchgear, and they can back each other up on those parts of the, the city. The existing lines, they're kind of shown in a brown. Those are already existing coming out of the substation shown there. For feeder 572, this goes with our Southwest, or the Northwest Substation rebuild, shown there in yellow. Right now, the substation has two feeders. This is actually getting a third feeder out of that substation for some redundancy. Outages seem to happen at some of the most inconvenient times. This one was a snowstorm on a Sunday afternoon. It was really heavy, wet snow. The picture on the right shows what happened. The pole simply caught fire with a faulty insulator. I wish our guys could work that fast, but that is a time lapse. That machine is our backyard machine. It's called an EZ Hauler. It can actually fit through about a three-foot wide gate. And as it goes in the backyard, it can actually carry the pole back there, sets the pole to the side, augers out a hole. You saw how convenient that was to set. It also has a bucket attachment, so the crews can actually sit in the bucket, go to the top of the pole and transfer the old wires or the existing wires to the new pole. Squirrels has been a big problem for us. This is a video. If you can see, there's alignment actually on the pole right there, and the squirrel is on the communication line. Doesn't even care that we're, he's there. That's actually Tegan, one of our apprentices. We got him from the Streets Department. Thank you, Charles. But yeah, the squirrel goes right underneath him. No bother. And I don't even think Tegan knew he was there. But squirrels cost us at least $250 every time we have to roll alignment out. Most of the time, it's just a fuse. However, sometimes when the fuse blows, if the equipment's a little bit aged, it can blow up the equipment and would have to replace that equipment as well. But every time someone comes out, it's a $250 truck roll.
Do you have an estimate of how many times this has happened in recent months?
I don't.
But it's been several times, right?
Mayor, I saw on the Power Department report today, there were 45 instances.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Wow, 45 times 250.
Funny thing is when you're. It's about three or four times a week.
When you were making that slide right there, it happened. The squirrel blew a fuse when you were making that slide. So a little bit of our outage history from 2017. We average, looks like about 130, 140 outages a year. Last year, 2024, 168. As we mentioned, that was due to squirrels. It was also due to the influx of Utopia boring in all of their conduit. Unfortunately, they would hit some of our lines, which kept our crews busy. Unfortunately, they would hit some of our lines, which kept our crews busy. But on that note, average of 0.999% reliability on our system. We're doing really, really well. Some things that affect our budget, examples here of some bad poles. The pole on the left is clearly rotten and decayed. You can see it when you walk up to the pole before you climb it. The pole on the right, however, you can see there's that thin shell, but the inside is just completely rotten and gone. The next video will demonstrate how gone the interior is. That's Jess, our superintendent. So from the looks of it from the outside, the pole looks decent, but there's no structural integrity to that pole at all. So since 2000, we've replaced about 2,370 poles out of 4,938. You can see over the years, we've increased our quantity. However, in 2014, our quantity has dropped a little bit. This is due to the fact that we have six new apprentices. With the inexperience, it's harder to change out power poles. It requires a lot of experience and some good hands. We have great guys that work for us, but they're just not quite there yet. We're still working with them. With these poles that we change out, the video that we showed you with the rotten poles, a lot of times the report will come in that one of the poles in a line is bad and the other ones aren't. However, if we just went and attacked those poles individually, we would have one pole that would be really tall to meet new standards and the other poles would be short. The picture on the right, you can see the existing pole line. That's an old 35-foot pole. Our new standard is 45-foot poles. It keeps the spacing on the poles so our guys have safe areas to work in as well. It keeps us above most trees. Some trees, as you can see on the left, we still have to trim, but it's just safety for our guys and safety for everyone. This, here is a transmission pole with distribution underbuild. The lower wires are the distribution side of it. So the top wires are 46 KV or 46,000 volts, and the bottom lines are 7,200 volts. This is, these are all energized. What we're doing is replacing one of those arms. You can see how they cover up and what, how much machinery and equipment it takes to do it safely and without taking an outage. So in the past 10 years, excluding the 2020 wind, we replaced about 126 poles per year with new conductors, transformers, and hardware. 2018, 2019, we actually had Osmos, an outside contractor, come through and test our poles. That's how we've been finding some of these poles that have the shell, but they're hollow on the inside. In that test, we had 265 poles that were rejected, and of those 275, we have 127 left that we still need to change out. At the rate we're going with replacing not just the rejected poles, but all of our poles in general, it'll take us 20 years to replace all the poles. And by that time, with a life expectancy of 50 years of a pole, it's time to start over again. Speaking of underground, now going from overhead to underground maintenance, we have approximately 1.2 million feet of underground cable installed, and 237,000 feet of that is Barre concentric cable. And I'll show you a picture of that and explain to you why that's such a nuisance here in a minute. A lot of that cable was installed in 1970 and 1986, and it had a 20-year lifespan. So it's older, it's by far older than me. And the new jacketed cable, which we'll show you a picture of that as well, has a 40-year life, but we're expecting that to, excuse me, a 40-year warranty, but we're expecting the life on that to be much more than 40 years. It's really good cable. We average changing out about 18,000 feet of cable per year since 1995. And again, at this rate, it'll take us 30-plus years to replace all the cable that needs to be changed out, all that Barre concentric. So here's the picture. The new cable on the left has the red stripe around it, and the Barre concentric cable is on the right, circled in blue. Go to the next one, Galen. So there's three, the three examples. The top one is Barre concentric, and the middle one is the Barre concentric that's been in conduit for a while, and it's just corroded over the years. And the bottom is the jacketed cable. So if you can picture the lineman, if they're trying to pull the Barre concentric out, it's like trying, if my arm was the cable and my sleeve was the Barre concentric, as you pull it, it gets bunched up. And the more you pull, if it bunches up too much, you'll snap that cable, and it can snap anywhere in the conduit. So a lot of times before we start these projects, we'll call in a blue stake so that we know where our line is and where everybody else is. And if it so happens to break right in the middle, then we start digging. And that can prolong outages and cause issues. Just last week, we had an outage in the Peach Lane area due to this, but someone was doing something right, because when we pulled the Barre concentric out, it came right out, and we pulled the new wire in, so it was a short outage. But it still sneaks up on us and catches up. But we're trying to be more proactive in changing it out and not having to deal with it during outages. And tree trimming is another big program that we have. We have one in-house contractor or one in-house crew, and then two contractors. Diamond Trees is our contract crew right now, and we're on average replacing or cutting about 4,476 trees a year. We're on a three-year cycle, so if they come through a neighborhood that time of year, they'll return in three years and have to trim them again for the growth. You can see in that picture there, this is one of my favorite pictures. The linemen are up on the pole, but if you look in the background, you can see the other lineman on another pole. That hole wasn't cut by tree trimmers. That hole was burned by power cables. And I can say, we don't have any more of that stuff on our system. And just tree trimming alone has helped with so much of our reliability and not having outages. Before I turn over to Tyrone, does anyone have any questions on my portion? Thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
So we get asked how our rates compare with those of Rocky Mountain Power, and it's not a, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. It takes a little bit of math to get them to be comparable numbers. Similar to Rocky Mountain Power, we do have a, like a 400 kilowatt-hour range, so anything below 400 kilowatts is a certain rate. Anything above 400 kilowatt-hours is a different rate. That's similar to Rocky Mountain Power. Rocky Mountain Power also has different rates during winter and summer. And Rocky Mountain Power, although they have, they have a base rate, you also have to look at the addition of four or five different schedules that tack on cost to that base rate. And so after I do that, our comparables are that, and this is, this is after our 3% rate increase, and the latest information from Rocky Mountain Power will be slightly below them during the winter. And then it's a pretty bigger difference between the summer months. But yeah, with a 3% rate increase, we should be about 2.6%. Our residential customers will be paying 2.6% less than those of Rocky Mountain Power. And I do take, I take an example of a Rocky Mountain Power customer bill and plug it into my spreadsheet just to make sure that it all ties out and the math is working how I think it is. Next slide. So yes, for our next budget, the big line item on capital is our Northwest substation. We've budgeted over $5 million. But as Alan mentioned a little earlier, our construction costs are going to probably put us ahead of this. But that is what it is. So some of the things that need to be changed, there's a low bus, it's a safety hazard, that needs to be changed. There's outdated breakers that we can't get parts for, and the transformer is aging. Next slide. Also, we've budgeted over $1 million to upgrade the programmable controllers at our two hydros, and the human-machine interface, and also the flow meter at Pine View. We've budgeted over $1 million for the feeder upgrades, so those are the feeders that Luke talked about. Next slide. Overall, our 10-year capital plan is over $45 million. So we talked about the Northwest sub and the control systems that echo Pine View, but we've also got the Northeast substation that needs to be rebuilt, plus any feeders, the ongoing distribution system upgrades, an AMI metering upgrade, upgrading our streetlight system, replacing the number-one turbine over at the plant, and our ongoing vehicle and equipment replacement program. So that's our presentation. Any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Thanks, Tyrone.
Mayor and members of the council, we'll just go over a few more slides and then go to the public hearing. Just wanted to give you an idea of where our property tax distribution goes when an individual or business pays property tax. This is an illustration for residential property and where those rates and which amount of dollars and the percentages there, you can see in the graphic. Because of the fact that we're all, every taxing entity is in the middle of getting their rates adopted, it wasn't possible to get everybody's proposed rate together, so I utilized last year's adopted rate and then used the fair market value that was provided by the county for 2025. So this is just to give an illustration of what the taxes do would be and how much is Bonneville City versus the other entities and what their contribution is to that. This is how our rates compare, again, using the 2024 year and adding into it some of the other rates that go into the overall rate to get a comparable based on the city rate itself and adding in those other districts. That then gives you an idea of where the city sits, and we are pretty low in comparison to the other entities in the county, other cities in the county, I should say. In summary, on the tax side, our property tax with no, again, no increase in property taxes, this year is a total of $4,74,060. And that's comprised of $3.6 million that is for our general use for supporting activities in the general fund, police, fire, and so forth. And then the portion that is for debt service on our general obligation bond, 473,910. And utilizing those rates, the average homeowner in 2025, using 24 rates and 25 valuations, are the amounts showing there from general property tax, $252 that they would pay on the average valuation, and $34 of the debt service portion of that bill. These are a listing of the adjustments to the tentative budget that was adopted in May to bring it to final balance, so that you're aware of that and the public's aware of that. So the final budget that is adopted will be adjusted and then posted and submitted with these adjustments to it, that were all discussed in prior meetings. Tonight also, there's a portion of the budget hearing and adoption that pertains to amendments that are required for various reasons to our current year budget, which ends in June of this year, 2025. And I apologize for the size of this, but in order to get all the information on here, in your packets, this same schedule is in your packets. But it is comprised of all the funds of the city. The general fund and the capital fund is on this slide, and for the various reasons that are listed there. And your adoption of the ordinance relates to the adoption of the new year also has a section with this in it as the exhibit that would be part of the adoption. This is the debt service fund and the enterprise fund, section of those amendments. And then finally, the special revenue funds and the internal service funds. Internal service funds being those that provide services to other funds and departments of the city. Now for council action tonight, Mayor. It'd be required to hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 compensation increases for elected officials as well as key appointed and management officers of the city. And there'll be a slide here in a moment that'll detail those. And then public hearings on that, and then a separate public hearing on the budget itself for amendment for the current year, the amendments that were just discussed, and then the 2026 budget that would include not only the dollar figures we've talked about, but all those things that's supported, including the tax fees and compensation schedules. And so that is where we're here at this point. I'll just give you the summary there again. The summary of the budget that is being proposed is 106,246,786 after those adjustments that I referenced before, and then the budget amendments that were just discussed, and that will be part of that budget. And then we could have a comment period on that, an opening of the public hearing. Mayor, if that's what you'd like to proceed with.
Excellent. Okay, so we will now open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-25 amended budget and the fiscal year 2025-26 final budget. So anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and where you live.
Lot of people here. Not usually this many. Gary Davis, 2814 South 500 West. As one of the few citizens who took an interest and attended, I think I got all of them this time. I missed a few last. All of the department budget meetings, it was enlightening, eye-opening, interesting to learn where the money is going and all of the amazing work that is being done by city employees and city departments in here. I made the comment earlier about another thing, about creative financing. We're not increasing taxes, but fees are going up. Yeah, okay, yeah, right. Anyway, the meetings that I've attended and everything I've heard so far today, and I actually read through all of the budget things that was posted for the public, I hate numbers, but it was, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
I just wanted to point out that the lightened power customer service charge is a highly regressive charge, and it impacts the lowest income and moderate income people most heavily. So for example, a senior struggling to get by on a fixed income and who uses only $50 worth of electricity a month would pay roughly 30% of that equivalent to that bill. She'd pay $15 a month in addition to her regular bill. So it's 30% of the bill would be in customer service charge. Now, if somebody used $100 a month, they'd pay roughly 15% of their bill in the customer service charge. And if somebody uses $500 a month, they pay 3% of their bill in the customer service charge. So people with low incomes really do have a hit on this. And I'd note that the customer service charge has gone up by 375% from $4 a month in 2010 to $15 a month now. And that's, annually, that's gone up from $48 a year to $180 a year, which is a pretty good chunk of money. And 10% of the 375% increase in the customer charge is transferred to the general fund, as I understand it. And if so, why? If we're charging people a customer service charge, why are we taking 10% of that and moving it over to the general fund? So I'd just note also that Bonneville's customer service charge is still roughly 30% higher than Rocky Mountain Power's with all the increases. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, now we will move to the next public hearing. And this is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-26 compensation increases for employees, including executive municipal officers. And is that?
That's correct.
That's, okay, that's what this public hearing is. Okay.
And this, this slide identifies that it shows if, for these positions that are listed, which are required in state law to be called out separately, the components of the increase that they are proposed for fiscal year 2026 budget, part of those are merit increases if they are employees, if they're employees, or combined totals for the complete percentage increase. And that's shown graphically there. So that is what the public hearing is regarding, and then ultimately the ordinance that will be considered.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. So we will now open the public hearing to discuss, for anyone to come. discuss, for anyone to comment on these compensation increase, these proposed compensation
I wasn't going to say anything, but when you look at the police chief 5%, I just want to make sure that our public safety people are getting a really competitive salary and we're recognizing them for that. And so looking at all of the increases on there, I just want to make sure you're taking care of the public service, the public safety personnel. Thanks. And he did not pay me to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and now we will consider approval of ordinance. Are we ready now, Galen?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want to.
We will now consider approval of ordinance 2025-08 approving compensation increases for employees, including executive municipal officers.
Mayor, I wonder if I could ask Galen to just give us an additional piece of information that might help address the last comment. Could you explain kind of our merit system and the cycles and?
Steps.
5% would come from the cost of living increase that all employees are getting and that's why you saw 5% kind of across the board on that chart, but how our merit system works and why therefore some were seeing a 10% because they're getting both a COLA and a merit increase?
Yes, there's several components that go into the compensation package of the city and we're very comparable in how we do things with other similar entities. An employee, a regular employee, a full-time employee would be considered for what's called a merit increase or based on their performance in their job through the compensation schedules. And each year, we also evaluate whether there's a need for a cost of living adjustment on top of that. And that would apply to any employee as well. And this year, it's a 5% increase. And we just compare that with what the cost of living is generally and how we are comparing with others around us. Additionally, we also evaluate all of our employees on a rotating schedule with others in our same area that provide the same types of services as other cities and by employment class and make certain adjustment recommendations on that. So if, for instance, police officers are evaluated in one year, we're comparing that against similarly sized entities in our area for the same types of positions. And then we evaluate that based on not only what they get paid in salary, but also their total compensation package, so benefit package that we have. And that's what's called a total compensation value. And then we make adjustments that are appropriate to bring them up to where they're comparable within the top, I believe it's the top third of the entities around us. And then if there are other reasons, I think that's basically the total reasons that comes into play with what is shown as their compensation increase.
Thanks for providing that additional information.
Thank you. Yeah, your point is well taken and not only is the police chief here to hear you, your comment, but also our HR director who is engaging, who, who works with market studies to make sure that our employees are compensated fairly and it's equitable with other, with other nearby cities. Thank you.
Mayor, maybe I just better make one other comment that's probably implied in the last discussion, but the reason why for those increases for each of those employees that, for instance, in the police department are not shown is that the law requires us to display them for a category of employee and that's why we show those particular employees. But if you were to show all of the employees, the different categories, whether there's a streets department worker, a police department worker, you would see increases in theirs as well, based on those things, a combination of merit, cost of living and market adjustments.
Thank you for that. If there are no other further comments or questions, we'll consider approval of ordinance 2025-08 approving compensation increases for employees, including executive municipal officers.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-08.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And now we'll consider approval of ordinance 2025-09 adopting amended and final budgets, property tax rates, composition schedules and related items.
I'd also make a motion on ordinance 2025-09.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously and do we, the other items here on the agenda, is that encapsulated in that motion or are these separate motions?
No, they, they're encapsulated.
Okay. Thank you. So we don't need to specify. Okay. All right. Excellent. So that is everything. Okay. Any other comments or questions before we adjourn tonight? Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the redevelopment agency.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? We are adjourned and we will reconvene as an RDA board with a separate agenda. Do we need a minute? Okay. Oh, okay. Do you need a minute?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, we will now reconvene. We will now begin our RDA board meeting Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 at 8:37. And we will, I'd like to welcome everyone to our RDA, our redevelopment agency meeting of Bonneville City. And is, and we will now review the minutes for the RDA board from May 13th, 2025. If you've had a chance to review those, is there a, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, May 13th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And now we will hold a public hearing where we consider adopting the RDA resolution 2025-01 approving the proposed fiscal year 2026 RDA budget. And is this an item that you're introducing for us, Francisco?
Not necessarily. We have a one-page staff report on page three and then the resolution is the, at the conclusion of the packet. I could, I could answer questions that the RDA might have for, for us tonight.
Okay. Maybe you could just give us a very simple overview.
Absolutely. Not mayor, but chair. The RDA budget includes Fund 72 loan program and fund as well as Fund 73, the administration and operations. I just want a review that we anticipate in Fund 73 collecting approximately 950, 950, I can't, I can't read numbers today. I'm sorry. $950,000 in new tax increment. And with that said, you should know that a portion of the RDA director, that's myself, comes from this fund as well as a part-time employee that we have in the planning department. With that said, we earmark some money as we discussed during our internal budget meetings and we have earmarked that 850, 850, I can't read numbers today. $850,000. And we have that prepared in the consolidated budget document. I apologize, I can't read numbers today.
No problem. We understand. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, any other comments from the council before we open this public hearing? Okay, we will now open this public hearing regarding the adoption of fiscal year 2026 RDA budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we will close our public hearing and is the RDA board, does the RDA board have any discussion in regards to this resolution?
Mayor?
Is, oh. Is there anything that you need to, okay. Thank you. Did you have a question?
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay.
For lack of comment or question, I would make motion that we adopt the RDA resolution 2025-01 approving the proposed fiscal year 2026 RDA budget found in the consolidated budget document.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously and now.
Mayor, did you vote?
Yes. Thank you so much. It was so fun. Aye. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks.